All right, I'm here for here.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Campbell.
Here.
All right, first order of business we have, all right, is the appointment of new city manager. All right, Mayor Wood.
Many of you have been wondering quite some time when we would be getting a new city manager. I would like to take you through the process that we went through. There were over 125 people that applied for the position. Councilman Moore and myself sat down along with Mayor Kate Callahan, and we went through each one of those resumes, and we ended up deleting those individuals that we felt did not fall into the category of what we were looking for. We came up with approximately 25 resumes, which we distributed to every council person for their review, and at that time, the council individuals, they selected the top, I think it was three, and then we came up with a total list of five. And we began the interviewing process of the city managers, and that took quite some time. We were able to dwindle down to the person that is going to be your new city manager, and we are very confident that he is going to do a very, very good job. He has experience in places throughout the state of New Jersey, in Jersey City, East Orange, and at this time, I would like to introduce him because he would like to say a few words to you. And once again, we all feel that we have selected the best person to lead Asbury Park forward, and at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Here. Thank you very much for everyone that's in the audience. I have 33 years of municipal experience. I started my career with the County of Essex, and it was a great place, a budget that was half a billion dollars. And there, I was with the city of Orange, which was an urban city in Essex County, one of the poorer municipalities in the state, and I acted as their CFO for 21 years. And from there, I was with the city of Jersey City, which is, will probably be the city's, rather, the state's largest city at the next census. It's the fastest-growing city in the state. 3,000 employees when I started, a budget that was also a half a billion dollars. I retired in August, and it started to get cold, and people, friends called me and said, you know, "Asbury Park, why don't you send them a resume?" And what I remember about Asbury is, of course, like most people coming here when you're a kid, and Asbury is just a great town going through its own gentrification process. I'm excited to start, I'm excited to be part of the city, and I'd like to thank council again for giving me this work.
Thank you.
And I'll take a seat here, Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor, if I could interject at this moment. If the council is inclined to appoint Mr. Kelly this evening during the regular portion of our council meeting, the employment agreement is attached to the resolution that you have before you this evening. Mr. Kelly will be starting with an effective date of February 1st, 2014. His contract will go through December 31st of 2014. However, under the memorandum of understanding that we have with the state of New Jersey with regard to the transitional aid funding, it is clear in that MOU that the city of Asbury Park cannot change city managers without the approval of the Division of Local Government Services. We all know that there is a change in the form of government coming as of January 1st, 2015, so there may be change. However, a change with the new form of government will need to be approved by the Division of Local Government Service. All of the relevant terms and conditions associated with Mr. Kelly's appointment with the city are set forth in the employment agreement, which will be a public document after approval this evening. Mr. Nuccio will continue to serve as the acting city manager through January 31st of this month.
And let me state just one other thing. We've gotten several calls from individuals from the media. The process will not be complete until we take the vote later on tonight, but that is our intention, to take the vote, and then it will be official.
All right, the third item on the agenda, all right, is items presented by Chief Kenyon. All right, there's two items, school parking ordinance at Hope Charter Academy, and the second is the appointment of 13 Class II special officers.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Police Department is recommending that two locations be designated as drop-off and pickup zones to accommodate the schoolchildren, three different schools, the Little Tots preschool, Alphabet's preschool, and the Academy Charter School. Two locations are at Monroe and Grand Avenue and Sewell and Grand Avenue. Be for one location for an hour and a half in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, the other location for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon. We've received several complaints about the volume of traffic and the double parking in the area, and our traffic safety unit has monitored the activity, and these are the recommendations that we're going to give. Okay. Next item, the 13 Class II special officers. Resolutions are required from the police academy prior to them being enrolled, appointing each as a Class II officer for the city. The majority of these officers are already employees with the city as Class I officers. I believe there are three that are city residents, all are local. They've been with us, the majority, for about a year or two, and we're recommending that all 13 be approved for in the police academy.
My one question was, how many are residents? But can you just describe, can you just tell me about the distinction between the class two? What makes Class II Class II?
Sure, sure. Class I officers are generally used for traffic, direction, and parking enforcement. They don't have full police powers, they don't carry weapons. Class II officers are, the academy is much more extensive, the training, they have full police powers, they carry weapons, they just don't receive a full certification as a police officer. So basically, they're able to do the same thing that we are.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, several of these officers, they will be, the point is, year-round employees of the city, paid for by the city. The remainder will be used through funds from a beach fund developer and the Board of Education assigned to the beach and the boardwalk area, as well as the schools in the city.
Any other questions for Chief Kenyon?
So with your approval, Mayor, council will prepare the ordinances for these two school parking issues for your consideration on introduction at the next council meeting, and you may determine to take action on the chief's request to appoint these 13 Class II special police officers later on this evening during the regular portion of your council meeting.
The fourth item on the agenda, Joe Cunha, the city engineer, all right, he has several matters to bring forward, including the South Wardwalk status update, contract, I think awarded the contract for the boardwalk, waterization, bid library, HVAC upgrades, due to community development block rent, and change order for community affairs facility project.
Thank you, Mr. Nuccio. Good evening, council. First item on the agenda, as Mr. Nuccio stated, is the review of the bids and recommendation of award for the South Wardwalk improvement space. As you may know, we're at a hole. We had a pretty lengthy process with paying this. We now receive bids, we currently see six bids, three of which have been disqualified. The lowest bidder officially requested to rescind his bid, and two others were deemed non-responsive due to a lack of certain documentation that needed to submit early contract specifications. I'd like to go ahead and recommend Rycon Group at this time as the lowest responsible bidder for the work for the base bid and the alternate bid day. As I delineated and detailed in my memo dated January 3rd, I'm sure you've had a chance to review the bid tally sheets, the references I attached, and also the resolution. And at this time, I'd like to seek to award this contract on fast track and get them started as soon as possible.
Questions?
Okay. This is approximately 600 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong on anything.
It's correct.
Just so everybody knows, Joe, Tony, myself, Robert called extensively yesterday. I still have some concerns about this, and a new concern is, we're not, again, correct me, we're not positive FEMA's going to reimburse us 90% of 100%, just because you changed the specs from going to traditional piloting, which were approximately $172,000 to go and fill that hill to pilot, which is more cement and everything, but...
How positive are we that FEMA's going to?
Well, we're not.
Like on a scale of...
We had a conference call with our current representative from Witness Associates, who's the liaison, Tufi on behalf of the state. They oversee and sign off on full payments to each municipality. She was relatively confident yesterday in speaking, or once I explained to her why there was a change in the actual design due to the lack of, or actually, the elimination of vibration with the method that was actually proposed in alternate bid day versus traditional timber, which requires much pounding and vibratory action. Again, with the close proximity to Convention Hall and some of those other buildings, it was in the consultant felt it in the best interest of the city upon initial design to actually include that in there as a non-vibratory method.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you, just because if you go back to the October 15th meeting, that is your mouth, your words were, "We have to hire a full-time engineer to oversee this project because we want somebody out there accounting how many times the pilings are being bagged into the ground." So now, from October 15th to now, somebody decided, "We can't bag the pilings into the ground because you think you're going to knock down Convention Hall," which to me is totally absurd. The pilings were driven along the north side of the boardwalk five years ago, Convention Hall didn't suffer an I.O., so I just don't buy that.
I'm sorry, so when you say relatively confident that FEMA's going to reimburse us, over 50% confident, 75% confident?
Well, every step in the way in the actual construction of the PW, which is a project worksheet, it was explained that we were going to have differences in the design. One made the bulkhead to match the existing, which is already different than the existing construction of the piece that we're changing. When I say existing by the bulkhead, it's the majority of the rest of the boardwalk. So everything south, if you recall from the beach, when you're looking up at it, you see that gray bulkhead that's like plastic, that's essentially what we like to put back. But right now, on that north piece, the 600 feet, it's rotted timber with a bunch of holes where the caps run in and out, so we'd like to make that match. It's longer lasting, that's the main reason there. So we explained that to them, we also explained the piles to them, and that there might be a possibility, at that time, it was just a possibility, of putting this in with the non-vibratory method. The other big issue was the EK decaying that exists now is significantly more expensive. We're putting in the more domestic, cheaper method to match the rest of the boardwalk. So essentially, the way we mentioned it was the existing value of the existing boardwalk versus the proposed value of the boardwalk with the changes, the change in design, would be nearly a wash. It's not an exact wash based on these bids that came in. It would still be an up charge across the board of about $120,000. So, but in talking to FEMA yesterday, she recommended that we go ahead and explain in detail that it was for the safety of the buildings itself, or liability, should we say, and the effects to those buildings. She said you have a very good chance on that, so.
Who's she?
Her name is Kathy Moody, she was a son...
How long for the job, Kevin?
Same as Dave Alvarez.
And how long has she been in the job, Kevin?
She's been there since the beginning of Sandy, but representatives...
No, 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 how long has she been representing Asbury Park?
Oh, just a matter of a million months.
And who's her boss?
Her boss is Mr. Witt from Willow Drive.
She's going to have to thrive this by head. Now, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but through her conversation yesterday, FEMA will give us, replace, but they will not, to my understanding, the way FEMA's operated, will they will not like, we had a wood boardwalk, they will not let us build a gold boardwalk and reimburse us, you know, $10 million. They will not let us, you know. So what makes you think that they're going to like, let us change things? Again, the bulkhead was wood, right, and it was rotten wood, but new wood will hold up another 30 years. So, and that difference is very small, but the difference between the pilings is about $500,000 to $600,000. If the taxpayers have to eat that because you want to gamble, I just can't vote for it. I gamble with money. I took the race track, I played the lottery, and I lose, but that's fine. I'm not gambling with taxpayers' money that they may have to eat a $500,000 bill because some lady who's been here two months, doesn't know anything, and has to report to other people, says, "Well, break us a letter and maybe we'll let it go." And that's a heck of a gamble.
Yes, and I understand completely, and that's why the alternate remained in there for the timber piles. So now we have a price. We've looked across the board, if we were to award the timber pile, and it doesn't change a lot there. So it's a matter of, I'm recommending the drill piles, but again, like you said...
Okay, let's get down to you, chief, for a couple of questions. You have removed six lights, and you have them putting in junction boxes for 16 lights. Why?
That was for future expansion.
And you expect them to pay for that?
There is a chance that they will pay for that.
A chance, a chance. Okay, you have them replacing two entrances to the beach, be it steps and be it ramps, only one's damaged. What are we doing?
There was actually two damaged.
Where's the other one? In this 600 feet, there's only one within this 600.
Oh, within the 600, but the other one on the south end was damaged. We only fixed it temporarily.
Does FEMA know that?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Yes.
But this project is to the south end?
It's not necessarily to the south.
Okay.
It's not necessarily. We also discussed the rail yesterday, and you know, that phase one has something.
I'm very good on your part, I would like to do that. Again, I don't like the time break. You told me yesterday, if we change to what FEMA we know will reimburse us, FEMA driving with wood, and now that may not be available for three to four weeks.
Probably not, based on my conversation with the contractor two days ago.
We're going to be into main queue, and this boardwalk's not going to be done, is my estimation, and...
Again, I built in the $5,000 liquidated damages per day.
But I think they also built in some stuff too, because I think you had, for item two, Ed, demolition and disposal of existing asbestos. You estimated $30,000. They're building as $130,000, so they built in some extra money there, probably for the damage of the $5,000 today. And if I'm going to do a contract, and I say a $5,000 liquidated damage clause, I'm going to put the money someplace just in case something goes wrong. I mean, but I don't see how they can be $100,000 off on asbestos removal, and that one's just totally, it's like, a little bit shocking to me because, I mean, I worked on that boardwalk, which not having as much asbestos there.
Right, and the other thing is, they will only be paid for what's actually deposited at a recycling facility. They have to provide tickets, calling tickets to prove how much weight was actually taken in pure asbestos.
So Tony, can you tell me what our options, or Joe, so the options are, one, to vote yes, which would award the bid and conceivably start construction and keep our fingers crossed we get reimbursement. That's option, that's, just so I, I just want to understand.
Yeah, and I will reiterate, all my talks with FEMA to this point, and that includes the initial people that were on with us, one gentleman specifically, John Cook, he is with FEMA, he constructed approximately four of our five project worksheets. He was relatively confident the entire time that the reasons that we gave for change in the design, or exactly, change in the design, were good enough that we would get approved.
But none of them will put it away.
None of them will put it away.
Okay, so that's option one. So option two is to redo the specs again to ensure they conform with the FEMA guidelines to ensure we can get reimbursed. Is that an option, or is that not an option?
That would be part of the option to postpone the entire project.
Okay, and then if we voted no, it's just, we just lose, possibly lose any reimbursement? If we say no to this project that you've put in front of us this bid, do we then go back, do we try again, or is it just over?
Yes, yes.
All right, you've already noted this, all right, as far as these developers go, or these vendors go, all right, what it basically would do would, all right, allow us then to go back out to bid again, all right? We change the specs, all right, we can be a little bit more narrow on the specs, or broader on the specs if we need to be.
So if we went yes, and FEMA said we're not going to reimburse you, what does that cost FEMA?
I think it's an up charge of $565,000. But again, on the, as I explained to Councilman Moore yesterday, there is some extra quantity built into this, so we do anticipate some money coming back. So wouldn't be the full $565,000. It depends on how much is actually installed. So if you look at the actual quantity in the contract, we're below that by a certain percentage.
So I'm sure this is a stupid question, but why wouldn't we just build what we know FEMA will reimburse us?
That's exactly what we're going to, we're going to go ahead and build that, but again, even the estimates that were included in the project worksheets initially had some extra in there. So it's not a major deviation.
One last question, going back to your question, just out of curiosity. Item 14, two-inch PVC conduit for electrical wiring, gap 3,000 linear feet, and then item 17, three-quarter inch water line, gap 700 linear feet.
Yes.
Why?
Essentially, there's, it's four side-by-side PVC conduits.
Okay.
Three, yeah, one will be extra, one will be for water, and three for electric.
Well, then two for electric would be...
Plus an extra.
1400 feet, not 3,000.
So how much are we looking at here?
14, you got for electric conduit, you got 3,000 linear feet.
Okay, so four lengths times 600 feet is about 2,400.
Five hundred.
Then we got the extra in there, so I may have misspoke. One for water and the rest for electric, one of which is...
Okay, more than ones for electric?
More than ones for electric, and the reason being, we would like to hopefully incorporate more cameras down there, we give them that a key to keep.
Thank you.
Joe, I'm going to ask, and I'm sure that are here are wondering, if we vote yes tonight, when will the project be completed? If we vote no, then how much of an extension to go back and do whatever we have to to make sure that we are guaranteed money to get the project completed?
We're also very confident, we've been talking to Kathy Moody yesterday, that if we ask for an extension, we should be able to get it. We would then be looking to do that in the fall. But if we were to award tonight, well, it'll be starting before the end of this month. 90 days is the firm contract on that, which puts us at the end of April. Now, with Councilman Moore, what he assumed comes to fruition, where they built in liquidated damages, that's beyond our control because they're essentially accepting the fact that they're going to be penalized for any day over 90 days.
Right, that is my assumption, I could be totally wrong, that's a, I apologize.
Wait, say that last part again, Joe.
So essentially, they have 90 days from the day they start program. In some cases, they will build in a certain amount of money in the job to account for the fact that they may be penalized for any days over, or will be penalized, $5,000 per day, plus inspection fees. So sometimes they'll build that into their contract, and we would never know that. So all we know is that we put out a contract, 90 days is what you have, anything over that is a penalty, $5,000 per day, plus $200 an hour for inspection.
So what about, and again, this is not my expertise, which is way more than I do, what about the contract is making FEMA reluctant to say they're going to reimburse us?
I wouldn't even say they're reluctant to reimburse us, they're not...
Or they're, they won't put it in writing?
That's a good question. A lot of times, until you actually spend the money with FEMA, you will never know every single bid. However, we endeavor to get everything covered in the PW, and that was the whole development process that we went through, to explain every ditty gritty, every detail of what we have versus what we're proposing. But like I said, you do have the option tonight to award with timber piles, but again, as Councilman Moore mentioned, the contractor did tell us it could be a lead time with those.
Okay, thanks.
So there is another option there.
Okay.
Joe, just one thing, I mean, I wish we could get, or get reassurance with FEMA that we're getting any money back from anywhere. I wish my nephews, who had a house in Seabright, was getting reassurance that he was getting money from FEMA. They're not making reassurances to anyone. D O A Commissioner's running for the same problem. Nope, they're not putting it in writing, it's not happening, so we're not different than anyone else. If we vote no, and we have to wait till the fall to do this, is there, do we want to risk in any safety or anything with the condition of the boardwalk?
I won't, I can't say that definitively, because the whole argument with FEMA, which if this was a battle to even get money, the amount that we got for this boardwalk, the whole premise behind it was that I cannot put my engineering license on the line to say that that boardwalk is safe. And that's what brought them to actually agree to give us the money to go completely rip it out and put it in.
When you say give us the money, but they're not giving us money?
Well, we're approved for $4.5 million, and we don't anticipate, and even awarding at this number, we're not going to get to that number.
Okay, and then if we put it off till the fall and you vote on it, there's no guarantee that they'll be okay about that then?
There's no guarantee to that, and most likely because of the competition and the workout at that time, prices will most likely go up, not because time went by, but because in the dead of winter, many of these contractors can't secure work that is able to be disrupted in the dead of winter. This is an ideal job. In my conversation with the contractor yesterday, he said it's imperative that he get this done because he's anticipating some major projects coming on the springs. He needs to have this complete and out of the way by then in order to keep those.
This is not the first time we've been through this with FEMA government entities. They've done this to us all the time.
Everything's a battle with FEMA so far.
And you usually would reimburse?
Yes.
Well, what do you think, Joe, would you ever... Have you ever changed materials and been reimbursed? That I can't answer, I don't remember. Has anybody changed materials and been reimbursed? So I disagree a little bit, I read today's press, it seems like Home Branch has gotten $16 million, and they're doing it the right way, and so...
Send my nephew.
I will say, I was actually going to touch on that example. They actually waited this entire time, did nothing at all. I was in close contact with the DPW director there throughout, and wondered why they were waiting. They actually didn't lose the season, the summer season, but they didn't do anything for the entire summer, and this is their payoff, in their opinion. So I, again, with FEMA, as you all stated, it's not FEMA's sure.
Any other questions about the status of our bid?
There's one thing that I'd just like to mention, that is, part of Joe's memo, I believe it was in paragraph two, he referenced the fact that the low bidder was actually McCauley Construction, and they came in extremely low, over a million dollars less than what the engineer's estimate was for the project. And as soon as the bids were opened, within a couple of days, McCauley contacted the city and requested that their bid be withdrawn because of computational error. We had some serious concerns as to whether a bidder that would come in a million dollars less than the engineer's estimate could actually perform the job for that severe lower estimated amount. The law allows, the local contracts law allows a bidder to withdraw their bid due to a mistake so long as that request is made within five days of the opening of the bids, and that's the case here, and so long as the request was made based upon a mistake, and a mistake being defined in the local public contracts law as an unintentional and substantial computational error. Based upon all the criteria that's set forth in the statutes under the local public contracts law, it appears that their request satisfies the requirements for them to be able to withdraw. And I would have some great concerns worried... And I would have some great concerns were you to award it to them for that amount. But in any event, their request meets the requirements of the local public contracts law. Although Joe indicated in his memo that it's up to your discretion as to whether you're going to hold their bid bond, the law doesn't actually allow you to do that. The law indicates that upon a withdrawal, the governing body shall return the bid guarantee to the bidder. So basically, it's a no harm, no foul, they're out of the running, and we move on to the next qualified bidder. And then you have number two, Ultec, and number three, Recon. Joe has recommended that you are gonna award the bid tonight, that you go with the third low bidder, Recon, because the second low bidder was not responsive to the bid specs, they failed to comply with the requirements that were set forth in the bid specs. And the two bids, the second and the third, were within, I think, about $9,000 of each other on a 3.5 million dollar contract, so they were very, very close.
Any other questions?
Okay, the next item on my agenda, seeking authorization to bid the library of HAC upgrades, and we see VGS set aside $58,000 for this work. This would be designed, I would put it out as a design bill, in coordination with a couple of HAC contractors, put together some specs, put it out to bid as a design bill, acquire mechanical seal, and get these upgrades done before summer, significantly before summer, and get the money used wisely. So I'd like to seek that authorization tonight. Any questions on that?
First.
Okay. My third and final item is in reference to the last CPG job that we put out, which was about a month and a half ago. We went ahead and we did the majority of the work. While performing the work, the director at the community affairs facility brought to our attention what we were trying to address by putting in the number of windows that we put in, which was not the complete amount for the building. Some had been previously installed, some others had previously not been touched. There are leaks with the existing windows, not with the new ones that we put in. So we spoke to the contractor, and we got a price to determine if we went to the limit of the budget that was actually appropriated for the project initially. If you recall, we awarded somewhere in the, I think it was 17,000 and change.
17,813.
17,813. So we will be able to waterproof the remaining windows if you allow us to do a change or increase for $2,187 in addition to what's left in the project. So I'd like to seek approval on that as well.
What we got... It was originally $20,000.
Right.
All right, that, all right, was dedicated to this project. All right, we actually spent, all right, that 17,000, 17,813. All right, there's that balance now of $2,187, all right, just seeking, all right...
So finish working, start the... Okay, I have no problem, I thought you just had to add two now.
No, 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 no.
No, no problem, no problem.
Any other questions?
Are you leaving the meeting, Joe? Are you, are you heading out or are you gonna stay?
I was, I was planning to have a meeting. Do you have anything in front of you?
Well, the only, yeah, I was just gonna bring it up, matters for, for, is that all right?
Yeah.
So the only thing I wanted to bring up was, hold on, because I have a...
Well, why don't we bring that up? Talking about matters for the council.
Okay, oh, you were gonna say it.
We'll stay. All right, thank you. Our fifth item on the agenda is the five-year tax exemption. All right, as you know, you know, we've visited this a few times already. Tonight, we're here for a policy call on do we want to move on? If we want to move on it, all right, the only find is that there is a draft resolution attached to the package.
It's actually an ordinance.
Ordinance, I'm sorry.
And this would once again be a continuation of the existing program that had been in effect previously, that expired December 31st, 2013. There are different options that Mr. Scotland reviewed with you when he was here during prior work sessions along with Mr. Semen. Since there was no clear determination to deviate from what you had previously, the draft that's before you is verbatim, it's the prior ordinance basically updated with you means. And that's up to your discretion and whether you decided to deal with that or not to deal with it.
Bring it forward?
So we'll add that to the regular session agenda for possible action.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda is a special events application for the eighth annual Oktoberfest, September 5th to the 7th, 2014. You have the application. Any questions on this? Mr. Gilmore is here if you have any.
What we're really trying to do tonight is really just lock in the date. We had a meeting with the, that's with our Chamber of Commerce, they're in the process of planning this event right now. This is probably the biggest event we've had in the city right now, it will take place this year, and we just want to lock that date. And so if you approve that date, we'll come back with all the logistical stuff at another meeting.
No problem. Any questions? Thank you. The seventh item on the agenda, it is the appointment of commissioners to the, or commissioner and an alternate commissioner to the, the NJ. We had the presentation in executive session. Bring it forward to you at this point, consideration of appointment of a commissioner and alternate commissioner.
I would actually suggest, I know this was one of the topics that was discussed during our executive session, we may be considering tabling that item when we get to the regular session agenda. If we do table, the continued renewal of the NJI contract, I think it would be appropriate to table appointing the commissioner as well. So perhaps we can hold that discussion until the regular meeting and decide what happens at that point.
Done? Yes.
There was some additional discussion after the formal review of it in executive session, Councilman involving myself and various other city officials, and we'll elaborate further when we get to it on the regular session agenda.
Okay.
Initially, well, initially, the thought was that the course of action was to proceed. After, after the formal executive session was adjourned, there were some additional discussions amongst administrative staff, and we may be recommending that you consider tabling it after all.
Okay, thank you. The eighth item on the agenda is submission of retirement benefits for two retirees, Christine Pollan and Benjamin Diaz, for your consideration. We have the resolutions prepared, we'd ask you to take action on that this evening. Matters with introduction by the city council.
Councilman Moore?
The Fisherman's Lot, somebody gave them obviously permission to store all the Army Corps of Engineers stage. Who gave them that, perhaps? Okay, next question. Okay, the way I understand the project, it started last week in Avon, and it's worked its way north, and it's gonna hit As, which is the final phase, and these are April and then...
Yes.
What happens to the Fisherman's Lot? Is all that stuff gonna stay there all summer and then go north into Alors and Deo? Are we gonna be the storage place for the world, or is that gonna be open for the summer?
I was actually at a meeting, if you weren't for, and they have to be, I'm Joe Longivan, and be safety supervised. They have to have everything gone by June 12th.
Okay.
Completed. I had a little concern because we opened our beach on Memorial Day, and the person in the construction company, left there, had some severe problems, they'd be out of there long before. It takes about two weeks after their replenishment to remove all of their foot. He said by Memorial Day, they should be out of there unless they, you know, have some real bad problems with weather or foot, you know, whatever.
Fantastic. And I have no problem with them using that, I just don't want to be there all summer, and then it's a station for Alors, Lockar, or Deo down the road. Okay, last thing, Mr. Lucio and Chief, can, can you guys get together and look at the traffic lights down the beachfront and see if we can put that little blinker that we have in pass quarters? And if not, we can't, but these, I know people have raised it past council meetings. I was down there, and sitting in the light, and I was thinking, this is kind of ridiculous. So if we can turn it off for the winter, we'll put on the blinker. And it's a safety project, I would appreciate it. That's all, thank you.
Radio seven?
Just, just gonna ask a question about plowing with the snow. Did we have some problems with coughing snowmies and plowing? Sunset Avenue was a mess.
Anyway, Robert, maybe you'll want to come up, that'd be director, Robert and myself. We were personally out there with Bruce for the entire time that we were plowing. There was nothing specific to Sunset Avenue that differed from the rest of the city. What we initially tried to do, with the temperatures plummeting, was just try to get the snow cleared and move it as far down as we can on the pavement, and keep moving and keep it open so that morning the commute would be a mess. Salting wise, by the time this morning came, actually earlier Friday night, we realized, actually no, Thursday night, we realized it was getting too cold to even melt in the air. As some of the more, you may know, GIC chemicals lose their effectiveness below a certain temperature. But the plan was always to maintain the plowing as long as we could, and come back when the temperature broke. The temperature broke Saturday morning, we had five, five men out with various trucks there and so on. And there was nothing specific to Sunset Avenue that I recall, unless Robert can think of anything, that was different than the rest of the city. If anything, the tighter streets were a little more difficult to work on. Snowdrift was a major issue with this storm. Snow so light and outery. There were streets that we knew were clear, very well cleared, five hours later, we went back there and it looked like we didn't do anything.
But you also wrote the intersection of Pine and Sunset there, it's a nice view there.
Yeah, we salted it like crazy today, and I think we have a sun pump issue there.
It happened a couple of years ago, we put an inlet at that intersection there, and the homeowner actually disconnected his sun pump and put it through the curb again. We hooked him up to that inlet to leave you at that power, and through the summertime, he cut it off and put it back through the curb again. It's still going through the curb and screaming that racing area there. So someone asked him actually, looked at the homeowner and said, look, it has to be connected back up to that place that was the inlet, you know, go underneath the roadway on Sunset, down on the north side, and it's like, right now it's actually staying on the south side, and it never gets across, it freezes up first.
I saw that the other day, I was like, well, it's an accident waiting to happen, that one's...
Today it was there, yeah.
And just one more thing, can I give the beach chair, and yes, we're open, out of Grand Park, please?
We actually, yes, yes, we'll take it all down very shortly. Whatever remains.
Thank you. That's it.
Just, just to be back off of what Sue said, let's come on Sixth Avenue after the storm, we'd get our, we'd dig our cars out, but it never came back. It was free to the curb for somebody to plow, and you know, I didn't make a phone call, I just wanted to see what was gonna happen, and it didn't. It was that way all the way down Sixth Avenue, it was that way through the city. I don't know what was going on, but I don't know why the scum truck never came back. That being said, we had a parking meeting last night, hoping things came out of that meeting, of course, we're gonna, we all know we're gonna be looking for a parking consultant. And some of the things that were discussed are going to be handled by the parking consultant. But there are a couple of things that we thought we could take care of now, the line, extending parking on Wednesdays through February, if the council's amenable to that. We got business owners saying it was working for them. Quite frankly, whatever works, I think we should continue to do it, it's no big loss to the city. Another thing is, we were talking about the managerial bank site, and I'd really like to know, Fred, I think you're gonna have to help us with this, I'd really like to know what's happening there, because the proposal that was made to this council, as far as what would happen on that lot, is totally unacceptable. We've been going around for two years, because we said we were gonna use this for parking, and the proposal that was made to us, quite frankly, doesn't put a dent in the parking that we need for downtown. So I'd like to know where that stands, as far as negotiations with that lot, because if we need to move on something and do something, maybe we should do it.
Okay, that's actually a matter that's being handled by redevelopment council, that's how we have it.
All right, we have, it's had, it's had, all right, looked at by them. And there were a couple of other things, as far as two hour parking, and changing some of the parking, multiple side of the street parking, but we also felt that our parking consultant would be dealing with this once he did his study. So we're not gonna bring all that up now, but there are a number of things that we really, we really didn't take care of as far as the parking of the city and some of the garages, and some of the places that are designated for parking garages. That being said, Madam Mayor, did you know that 100 years ago today, who was president? Woodrow Wilson? You know what he had to deal with? The last battle of Crazy Horse. You know who Crazy Horse was? An Indian was the last holdout. He was one of the last Indian holdouts who refused to surrender to the US government. There's another other thing, it's amazing, if you ever look back at this time in history, what has gone on in our history? It's absolutely fascinating. But one of the other things you might like to know is that the Mona Lisa was returned to France after two years after it being stolen. The town is stolen, so I don't want to mention this thing.
So a couple of things, and John and Sue kind of hit on it, Joe, but here's, like, here's what I saw, just looking up my, Thursday night, I thought you guys were fantastic, you were out early, I thought you guys did a fantastic job, so I'll start with Thursday night, no complaints. And then, you know, even Friday morning, I saw a little bit, and then it was like, I saw nothing Friday afternoon, I didn't, you know, I don't know if people were out, so I wasn't sure if it was budgetary constraints, it was, you know, the fact that you didn't have enough people to work the Friday shift, or that maybe the snow was at a point that you couldn't melt it anyway. I wasn't sure what it was, but Friday, I thought, I thought DPW really started strong, and then, and then Ian lost me a little on Friday.
Yeah, understood, understood. It's not a budgetary issue. It wasn't even an ice melt issue, it wasn't ice type kind of back snow, it was strictly a staffing issue at that point. We had, more than half of the staff had gone over 20 hours, which is really not even, we really should have gone more than maybe 10. But at that point, people were starting to get very weary, myself included. But that's why we came back, to come back Saturday, and try to ice melt, knowing that the temperatures were to break, and we were supposedly supposed to handle it to rain, and Mother Nature would have done the rest. It lasted longer than we thought. We went to Monday, by Monday morning, I guess it rained, but Sunday still had some packs, as I understand, so we're gonna have to try to adjust on the next one.
Yeah, I think it's also important for us to stress the fact is that right now, with the current conditions of staffing that city are, we currently have 15 people, or actually 17 people, when we include the director, and the assistant director.
And what should...
Two of those individuals, two of those individuals are out on injury, at this point. So under normal circumstances, we would have had two different shifts coming in, but...
So what's the staff, what's the staff generally speaking in the Peterfield? If you're saying it's 17 with two out right now, so that's 15, what would it normally be?
I mean, since I've been here, it's been lower than what it was historically, so...
We went down, all right, we went down about six people, or six or seven people less than years. This is something that I have been discussing with the state, we do have the waivers in, we're just waiting for them to be approved. In fact, I have two more waivers that I have to get to the mayor to sign, to sign today.
And then just one last question related to that. So like, take Athap, right, not a lot of sun, you know, probably similar to the streets a lot of people are describing, just torture us to go down. Do we have anything that breaks that down, like beyond salting?
At those temperatures, it's like, it's akin to going to a speed type town. When you see the snow come down, it packs, it gets hard, it's almost like ice cannot fly, and until the temperature breaks, you can't really get through it. It's just, it was very, very cold.
Okay. That's one. Tony, the selling of the Perkett Firehouse, we have any sort of status on that?
I can give you an update on that. Based on direction given to me by the council at the last meeting, I have communicated, made communication with the attorney for the Esri Department of Education, because as you know, the Esri Department of Education has been neutralizing that building for office purposes for some time, and it expressed an interest in purchasing the property. So I'm waiting to hear back from the board as to what their position is on the proposal made by the council. Since they are another political subdivision of the state of New Jersey, you would be allowed to transfer title to them so long as you adopt an ordinance, you can do it by way of a private transaction, that would not require going out to open competitive bid. We would need to go out to open competitive bid if we were to sell to a private party. So the direction from the council was for us to see if the school board was interested, and then if not, potentially to put it up on the auction block.
Can we give the school board a timeframe to either say you're interested or not?
Yes, absolutely, I will contact the attorney, I have to speak to him about another project that involves both the city and the board, and I'll follow up.
Okay, and then you and I already talked about it, the parking consultants, we're gonna, you have a draft ready for...
Yes, and basically, what I did was, after the last council meeting at which you approved, only had R and P for the parking consultant... only had to RFP for the parking consultant, and this was actually a councilman Moore's suggestion, I reached out to representatives of the state, because in the MOU that requires that we go through the fair and open process, there also is reference in there that they might, you know, on a case-by-case basis, consider a waiver. So I investigated the possibility. Of course, I would have to bring it back to you first, before we locked into anything, but to see whether they might be willing to entertain a waiver for the gentleman who appeared at the last council meeting, given the fact that he is very well-known in the area, has done this type of work in many different cities throughout New Jersey that are similar, urban centers to Esberry Park. And the state would prefer for us to go through the fair and open process. So I'd already started the RFP anyway, based on templates that we pull off the web from Lee Hawken and New Brunswick. So we will finalize that. I'm actually working with Don Salmon on that right now, and we'll get that out in a minute.
Awesome. And then, Tony, and if I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry. Any update? And I always get the name of this program, it's five shifts program that was around when Brian Grant was around, and then I think we were going to look into, you know, what the status of it was.
We've been discussing that. A couple of things that we've done at this point is, Joe is going to go out, or Joe Puni is going to go out, he's getting prices right now for equipment, he's looking at the training aspect of it. In addition to that, one of the things that we're going to have to do, is we're going to have to talk with the fiscal monitors about this, because it would be bringing in, these individuals would be comparable to seasonal workers.
Okay.
And we would have to get the approval and see how we're going to be able to do this. Once we're able to identify where the resources, the funding is going to come from.
Okay.
But we will reach out to the fiscal monitors about bringing these individuals in as soon as we can get a waiver, once we identify the funding.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred. Is this it? That's it?
First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year to each and every one of you. I hope your holidays were good, and this year is very prosperous for each of you. The meetings will resume the first and third Wednesdays of every month, so I just want to mention that. In addition to that, during the snowstorm, one of the things that I saw on the news was a part of New York City has a GPS system in their trucks, so they know where the trucks are. And I think there was a question on everyone's mind, when are they going to get to my street? And I'm not sure, and I'll throw this question out, do we have a scheduled plan of which streets are plowed and what won't? You want to comment on that, Joe, please?
Essentially, we were limited to, we had approximately four of the larger trucks, commercial vehicles. We actually sent three of those out first, attempted to spread salt until a certain time in the west, it was probably around 8:00 AM Thursday night, and then we began plowing, we deployed all of them. We put, we divided them evenly in four quadrants throughout the city, two hit the avenues and two hit the streets. Pickups went behind, they picked trucks with the plows, and attempted to clean up behind them on the tighter fitting areas, the intersections as much as possible. As far as a written plan, no, not right now, but we can put one together. I would prefer that we put one together once we have a full staff, or at least all of our resources together. Right now, it's, I hate to say that at times it can be a firefighting, but it's not putting out fires, quote unquote, so, but that can be done.
I do think the public would be very interested in knowing what type of plant and which streets will be plowed and who would work. So hopefully, we can work on that.
Okay.
Thank you. The other thing, each and every one of you should have received this calendar. I hope you did. If you did not receive it, Department of Public Works put it out. It's early this year, but it has all the various dates. If you did not receive one, I'm sure, Joe, they can come down here, Tony.
Yeah, they've all been mailed, they've all been mailed as of yesterday.
Okay, so...
And there's a copy, they'll make it picked up right at the reception desk.
At the reception desk, yes. And if you did not get one, did you say they were mailed out today?
They were mailed out, but we also have extras at Public Works and City Hall.
Okay, and probably the only reason why I have this is because every week, every week before our council meeting, this is in our package. And so that may be the reason why I'm getting ours, girl. The other thing I want to mention, and I'm going to have these flyers out. Lincoln Tech is going to be here in Chambers on January 23rd. And for those people that have a high school diploma, that are looking for not a job, but a career, they will be explaining their entire program. So I reach out to all of you, and if there's anyone that you know that would be willing to go through a training program, to please show up, 5:10, January 23rd. The flyers, once we have a break, the flyers will be over there, please share it with as many people as you know. And then lastly, this Saturday, 12 noon, at St. Stephen's Church, there is going to be a meeting, there's a seminar, a commission, that is looking at the violence in the city and how we can improve or reduce the crime. And so you're all invited. And that's it for me, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, Cassandra, there's something, there's another job, I'll post it, I'll talk to you.
FBI.
There's something else. There's another job.
That's different.
Oh, no, what is it?
Face-based initiative is good.
I think it's a job training program where you come to City Hall from 2:00 to 2:00 to register for the program. I'll put it on next door, and maybe, Tom, we could add it to, one second, we'll get the information, maybe add it to a blast.
Hold on, please, one second, he needs to change the...
I don't have it all figured out.
Anybody else have anything? Management of the board, that's the city attorney.
Yes, a couple of quick things. First is, I just wanted to indicate that the website project is out. Proposal due date is honored before January 22nd at 12:00 noon. All proposals must be received in the city manager's office, and that is where the proposal opening will take place, actually, in the city manager's conference room at 12:00 noon on January 22nd. Obviously, this is a very much anticipated project. It was put out under the competitive contracting method under the local public contracts law, which allows for a review and ranking of the proposals that are received after the proposals are open. And I'd just like to remind us that we do need to establish a review committee, and that committee is to be established by the city manager, so that we can be, hit the ground running, basically, so that the proposals are open, and that committee can then make their recommendations to the mayor, council, or board. And then for the benefit of the public, I'd just like to indicate that there are several items that may be acted upon this evening that were discussed during our executive session earlier. The first matter, as you heard at the beginning of our work session, would be a resolution authorizing the appointment of a municipal manager and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement relating thereto. The municipal manager, who is anticipated to be appointed effective as of February 1st, is Jack Kelly, and the terms and conditions associated with his involvement with the city are set forth in an employment agreement, which will be a public document after its approval this evening. The second item that was discussed earlier that might be acted upon is a resolution authorizing the settlement of certain workers' compensation claims involving Benjamin Diaz at the recommendation of the NJIIF, who are our joint insurance fund handling those matters. And the next two items, I'm going to announce them. They might be tabled, but they were addressed earlier during the executive session, and we did indicate that action might be taken during the regular session. The first being a resolution appointing risk management consultant, which is the firm of Brown and Brown Benefit Advisors in Shrewsbury. They've been servicing the city for some time, and this would be a continued appointment of them, along with renewal of the contract that the city has for its liability insurance and workers' compensation claims with the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. As I indicated earlier, those two measures might be tabled to a future meeting, but I did want to announce that action might be taken on them one way or the other. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, I have two short matters. First, I'm glad that Chief Petty is here, because in executive session, we touched on the issue of disaster response very quickly. And the chief had mentioned to me last week, that's something I do, is working on with Long Branch. Chief, do you have a couple, say a couple words about it?
Sure. As I'm sure you're all probably aware, that from time to time when we have emergencies at Esberry Park, that spreads beyond our capabilities, we call mutual aid, what we call mutual aid, where we bring in outside help to help us in our time of need. And being part of a program like that, we also respond to other municipalities in their time of need. Long Branch is a little bit further away than we're used to operating with, and we've always responded to them in an ad hoc kind of manner, where they would request us, but it wouldn't be part of any written plan. They approached me because they're having some problems with staffing in their area with the surrounding departments, and they asked if I minded if they put us on a formal plan for a two emergency, for anything to a third alarm fire or crater, especially weekdays, Monday through Friday during the workday, when they have a combination fire department and their volunteers are unavailable. I told them I'd be willing to do that under the current directive, Directive 33 from the state of New Jersey, and the mutual aid laws and things like that. I'd be willing to allow us to be formally placed into their system as long as it was reciprocal. And I plan to place them into our system, where, again, they will respond to us, in our case, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, if we get a third alarm fire or crater. It's really nothing new, except it'll be formalized in a written plan that will be in a computerated dispatch system. We both share the same county dispatch. I want the city manager to know about it in case it came up, so he was aware what was going on. I want the council to be aware also. Do they reimburse us? It's reciprocal, so they don't reimburse us, and we don't reimburse them. Yeah, I understand, I have no problem with that. It's good, but it seems like if they're asking you for this, they're a lot shorthanded than we are right now. That means for you to go down there, you're going to have to have like a total recall as close as over 100 to go down there. It wouldn't be a total recall, it would be a very partial recall. But we could send the guys on duty, obviously, you'd have to... Well, we would send, that's the agreement, we would send the on-duty guys and backfill, and they would do the same thing, they would send their on-duty people and backfill at their own cost. We all bear our own costs, we're agreed. So it's, you know, all things being equal, and from year to year, year to year, you can end up going there more times than they come here, or vice versa. But at the end of the day, it should pretty much be a wash. It's not a tremendous amount of money, I suspect it probably wouldn't have it more than four or five times a year. Of course, you know, anything can happen, you can have an extremely busy year, but on a normal year, I don't see it happening any more than four or five times a year. Okay? Have any...
Thank you, Chief. The second thing that I have is, we just received word from Monmouth County Park System that we have been funded an additional $250,000 for the third phase of the Springway Avenue Park. That brings a total from the county, $750,000. We've discussed this with Joe Puni, we're in the process now of remediating some ground there, and we're beginning to, simultaneously, we're going to be going out and doing design. So hopefully, we're going to begin to see some progress with Springway Avenue Park very soon. In addition to that, we have just received word from the Green Acres that a request that we had put in quite a while ago about making modifications to our Rossi has been approved. So with that, we'll be able to update the current Rossi, to add the Springway Avenue Park parcels onto that property and make the changes that need to be made over at Overlook or Kennedy Park. So that's, you'll be seeing that probably within the next month, as far as that goes with the new Rossi. That's all I have.
Want to do a German?
Second, Walter.
Just take a break for five minutes.